Good afternoon, it's approximately 6:40. Welcome to the Thursday, July 14, 2011, meeting of the zoning board of examiners and appeals. I appreciate your patience, we had some technical difficulties earlier, and you'll notice that we only have a five-member board currently. We're hoping that a sixth member shows up shortly, hopefully by the time we get to Agenda Item H, public hearings. So, if that doesn't happen, we'll talk about your options to postpone, but let's go ahead and get started with the roll. We call the roll, please.
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars. Jeff Braun.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Present.
Ann Denny. Kate Williams.
Here.
Dale Patrick.
Here.
For those of you who may have missed it on the way in, there are hard copies of the agenda and the three cases on tonight's agenda in the lobby, if you'd like to follow along. Looks like we have some minutes for approval. Those minutes are from Thursday, May 12. Has the board had a chance to review those minutes? Any discussion about those minutes? Any opposition to approval of minutes? Okay. Minutes are passed, with a vote of five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item C, Special Order of Business, Executive Sessions. Are there any disclosures by any board members this evening?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Patrick.
In the case of 211-079, I have discussed this with... In the case of 211-079, I've discussed this with Ms. Jay. She was looking for a letter of non-objection, and when she told me she was coming for the board, I turned that over to one of my employees to handle, so I have not actually looked at it from her standpoint, just in the case, so...
Do you feel that your association with the petitioner may impact your ability to hear the case and rule on it?
No, I do not.
Okay. Any opposition by any board members to Mr. Patrick participating in Case 2011-079? Okay, saying none. Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Are there any other disclosures? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Item D, Resolutions for Approval. We have two resolutions, Resolution Number 2011-012 and Resolution Number 2010-035. Has everyone had a chance to review those resolutions for approval? Okay. It looks like we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Vig. And a second, Ms. Williams, thank you. Discussion on the consent agenda. Mr. Patrick.
On the case of 210-035, I was not a member of the board at that time, so I can't... don't feel like I could vote on it.
Mr. Barrett, a little bit of guidance here. Mr. Patrick wasn't on the board and didn't listen to the hearing in which this transpired. Would that preclude him from being able to vote on the resolution?
Correct, Mr. Chairman, if the board member didn't see the minutes or listen to the tapes, no voting.
So, it looks like we'll need to pull that resolution from the consent agenda. Could somebody do that for the board, please? Could a board member please pull that resolution from the consent agenda? Mr. Vig, thank you. Mr. Fink, thank you. That's fine, now we just... Can you cancel the vote?
We don't need a motion to pull the resolution from the consent agenda. We just need to have someone pull that, then vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda, and go back to the resolution and do a motion to postpone.
Got it.
That's the only way we can do it.
Any other discussion or changes to the consent agenda with the one resolution remaining? Okay, saying none. The motion's still on the table, so we should be able to vote, is that correct? All right, the consent agenda is passed, minus the resolution that was pulled, and that passes with a vote of five to zero. Now, it looks like we need somebody to move to postpone the polled resolution. Could a board member please make a motion to postpone Resolution Number 2010-035? Frozen as well.
Anyone else who's frozen, hit the "on the floor" button, and they should sit back.
Okay, so do we need to reset the motion then?
No.
Okay, Mr. Vig. Mr. Vig, thank you. Mr. Fink, thank you. So, there's a first and second to pull a case 2010-035, or rather, to postpone that resolution. Any discussion or opposition? Do we need to vote, or can we... Okay. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Agenda Item E, Appearance Requests. I don't believe we have any this evening. Unfinished business, public hearings, none, and nothing on our regular agenda either. All right, that takes us to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings, and it looks like we still have a short board, so I'd like to read for the record and everyone in attendance the policy regarding postponement of public hearing applications due to a short board. When there is a short, five-member board or commission, and a postponement is offered to and agreed by the petitioner, they will be moved to the next regular agenda. This should occur within 30 days, which does not require re-noticing the case, which means no new public hearing notices or advertising. If the petitioner is willing to postpone it but unable to attend the next available meeting date within those 30 days, the petitioner has a one-time-only option to choose the next date certain he or she can attend at no extra fee. When a postponement is requested by the petitioner, there is a $750 rescheduling fee, and a new public hearing date shall be determined by the Department of Community Planning and Development. This will put their case in the next available cutoff date queue, as if they were submitting their case for the first time. And, Mr. Barrett, when would the next case... or, excuse me, hearing be...
Chairman, we want to poll the board, but two weeks from tonight, July 28, assuming we'd have a six-member board, otherwise it would be August 11.
That instruction was confusing to me. It sounded like you were saying it was $750 fee to postpone.
Thank you, Mr. Fink, for raising that question. Let me clarify for everyone in attendance, and, Mr. Barrett, I'll ask your input as well. The last statement about the $750 rescheduling fee does not apply in this instance where we have a short member board and the petitioner's elect to postpone based on that, is that correct?
That's correct. No B.
Okay. All right, so, quick discussion with the board.
Yeah, I just think it's important for people to understand maybe you didn't explain... what a short board means, so the applicants realize, is you have to get every vote on the board. When we have more members, of course, you need to pick up five of the board, so you would need every vote here, and that's why we offer you this opportunity to postpone it, where we have more members on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. A fully constituted board is nine members. We currently have seven members appointed, and we only have five here this evening. Of course, majority is required, and that would, as Mr. Fink said, require five votes this evening. 20th of July?
I'm real iffy on the 20th of July, I couldn't schedule, I'd be out of town right now.
Okay. And our new appointment wouldn't be able to attend the 20th of July either, would he?
Well, he'll be eligible, we'd have to get a hold of him and see if he's in town.
Okay.
Mr. Dunham, that is, the new member.
So, it looks like, most likely, the 12th of August would be the next meeting. Excuse me, the 11th of August. Based on that, I'll call each petitioner forward one at a time, and ask whether or not they would like a postponement. And if so, the next meeting would be held on the 11th of August. If you choose to hear your case tonight, then we will do so in the order as those cases are presented on the agenda. Case 2011-074, is the petitioner representing Park Plaza 2 LLC present? If so, please come forward. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
I'm Michael Ivancic, that's I-V-A-N-C-I-C, and I'm the representative for Widener Apartment Homes on Park Plaza 2, variance.
Thank you, Mr. Ivancic. Would you like to have your case heard tonight or postponed?
We'll go ahead and have it heard tonight.
Thank you. In Case 2011-081, is petitioner Maria DeLeon present? If so, please come forward. Again, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Hi, I'm Christina Enix, E-N-E-X, and I'm Maria's representative.
Good evening, Ms. Enix. Would you like to have your case postponed or heard this evening?
Can I ask you a question first?
Yeah, please do.
If I heard you correctly, if we postponed today, we're looking at August 11?
That's correct.
And, not entirely sure if there will still be a short board, then?
Chances are improved that there won't be a short board.
Improved, okay, but not guaranteed.
Got it, correct.
And then, did I hear you correctly, when there would be a $700 additional fee to postpone?
No, that does not apply in this case.
We'll go ahead and be here today.
Thank you. Case 2011-079, is petitioner Allison J. present? If so, please come forward. Again, please state and spell your last name for the record.
If I might ask, how many votes do I need if there's a full board?
You still need five votes.
Okay, so that doesn't change?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I think I'll still vote in that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jay. Ms. Jay, if I can call you down one more time, sorry. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record.
Allison J.
That's spelled J-A-Y?
Yes, J-A-Y.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jay. All right, let's start at the top. Case Number 2011-074, the petitioner has already indicated their presence, representing Park Plaza 2. Mr. Barrett, I believe this is your case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fifty-five public hearing notices were mailed for this item, and it was posted on the municipal website, and the blue and white public hearing signs were posted on the property. We received one response in opposition to the public hearing notices mailed out.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I just realized, I forgot to read the order of business. For the public's benefit, I guess I'll do that real quick. How we'll proceed through the public hearings is this: The chair introduces a variance and explains procedures to be followed. The variance, case number, and the name of the applicant are read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice, which Mr. Barrett has just given for our first case. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, again, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of that public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, three minutes each. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to that variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce those oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. All right, Mr. Barrett, please proceed with your case.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, fifty-five public hearing notices mailed. The application was posted on the muni website, and the blue and white public hearing signs were posted on the property. There was one public hearing notice received in opposition to this variance request. The request is to allow fewer parking spaces than required by code. If the request is granted, 155 parking spaces would be allowed, when current code would require 185 spaces for a 111-unit apartment building. Currently on the property is a 100-unit apartment building, and what the applicant is proposing to do is delete 11 parking spaces and build or add into the existing building 11 new dwelling units. So, that would be the shortage between the 155 spaces he's asking to be allowed and the 185 spaces required by code. On page three of the staff package is the existing parking setup, showing the parking areas to be removed and approximate areas of units to be added. Excuse me. On page four are the parking plans of the subject building and the adjacent property, and that information is included, because the adjacent parking building is... excuse me, the adjacent parking on that building is where spillover parking would be allowed to occur, and that is one of the standards, so we ask for the parking areas of both properties to be indicated. There is a conforming 100-unit multifamily structure. It was built in 2005 on the property. It is fully developed. The applicant is going to remove, or is asking to remove, some parking spaces, and within some of that parking area and unused area within the building, he would add 11 more dwelling units. This net loss of 11 parking spaces and the addition of 11 new dwelling units is the cause for the variance. Some items to be aware of, but which are not actually part of the variance, the fire department is going to be evaluating the 11 new units for ingress and egress. There is a usable yard requirement, 100 square feet per unit for the 11 new units. The applicant is not asking for a variance for that, so we have a condition that he submit new plans at time of permitting, assuming the variance is granted, that indicates the new usable yard area can be met. The project management and engineering division has also submitted in their comments that they would like to see new drainage calculations. That would be part of the permit anyway, and I suspect there is no change to drainage, because all of the changes to the building are going to be internal. There's no additional concrete, no increase in the floor plan footprint. These are just items the applicant needs to be aware of. The applicant has submitted a parking calculation indicating the parking requirements under three scenarios, and there was a summary sheet that was accidentally left out of the package, so that was put on the table at your chair for this evening. The three scenarios in summary indicate what the current requirement is under Title 21. The second part of the table indicates what the parking requirement would be with 11 spaces removed and 11 dwelling units added under the current code. And the third part of the chart shows what the parking requirement would be with the new dwelling units added, with the parking spaces removed, and how the parking would be calculated under the proposed Title 21 change, which has a lessened parking requirement. And the Title 21 change also includes a density credit and a mass transit credit. Those are labeled A, B, and C on that parking chart that's been handed out. For a parking space reduction, only two standards are required. Standard number one is that a variance for the number of parking spaces shall be granted on the basis of the demonstrated need for parking. The intent of this is that the applicant or some agency has conducted a parking study, which indicates the current code requires more parking than is actually generated by the proposed use. The municipality, the various departments reviewing this, find that this standard is substantially met. The applicant has provided a parking study, which indicates parking is in excess of what is actually needed. The municipality has also conducted a parking study of this property, and also believes the parking... the property is overparked. The two studies have some variation in the amount, but it is quite a bit of excess parking, anywhere between 40 and 60 spaces. Further next door to the subject property is Park Plaza 1, the same owner. They have a similar number of dwelling units, and they also conducted a parking study, and so did the municipality, and that property likewise appears to be overparked. So, it does seem that in this general area, in this zoning district, that the code-required parking demand is in excess. The property is located at A and 16th. It is close to shopping, employment, and recreation. It is near to a transit supportive corridor, and both A Street and 15th Avenue have several muni bus lines on them. One caution to be aware of, that we believe might slightly skew the parking studies that have been done, is that across 16th Avenue from the apartment buildings is public parking area for Mulcahy Ballfields. And it is possible that people at home for lunch or for a short stop may take advantage of that free parking at the Ballfields. However, in the municipal study, it appears that the subject property, tonight's variance, is not as much of a user of that parking area as is the other Park Plaza property. In any case, the properties appear to be overparked, and standard one appears to be met. Standard number two, that spillover parking onto other properties can be avoided. The intent here is that if there is something wrong with the parking study, and it turns out that additional parking is needed, the applicant can indicate where that legally required amount of parking can be placed. This standard is only partially met for three reasons. Park Plaza 1 was built in '78 and is legally non-conforming in regard to their number of parking spaces. If Park Plaza were to be built today, they would be short parking, and this is important, because the applicant is proposing, as one of his solutions for spillover parking, a joint parking agreement between Parking Plaza, Park Plaza 1, and 2. So, if the parking were needed on Park Plaza 1, we'd be making them legally non-conforming, and that is something we cannot do. However, we're placing a great deal of reliance on the various parking studies that have been conducted, and believe that this is just a technicality and is not likely to happen. The second reason the standard is only partially met is that a joint parking agreement relies on the two uses sharing the parking to not have similar hours of operation, but these are both apartment complexes with similar numbers of units and probably have very similar hours of operation. And the third reason the standard is only partially met is that parking may be occurring to a small extent, and we're talking just a half a dozen cars or so at the public parking at Mulcahy Ballfields across the street, and that could be slightly skewing the parking study conclusions. Regardless, I'll go back to what I just said, we're placing a great deal of reliance and confidence in the parking studies that have been conducted, and we believe that the parking requirement in the code for Plaza 1 and Plaza 2 is in excess. The department is recommending denial, even though standard two is only partially met. Should the board find that the standards are substantially met, there are five conditions on pages nine and 10 of the department report, and there is one other item I should mention in regards to spillover parking for standard two. It's not a condition, because we didn't want to burden the applicant with anything additional at this point, but there's no designated motorcycle parking at this property, and it might be possible, depending on how many motorcycles are parked and owned there, that they could be assigned a motorcycle parking area, rather than having a single motorcycle taking up a car space, and that would get us a few extra spaces. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Does the board have any questions for staff? Mr. Vig?
Mr. Barrett, in your summary, you said that the department recommends denial. The packet indicates, or says recommends approval, and I just wonder if you could clarify.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, the department recommends approval, so if I said denial, I misspoke.
Mr. Barrett, I do have a question. Is the parking at Mulcahy posted? Are there limited hours of parking? What's the status of that parking area?
Mr. Chairman, I thought I caught pictures of that parking area. It's essentially unrestricted. Parking on the street is not allowed, but parking in the area designated for the Ballfields is essentially unrestricted.
Mr. Vig?
Yeah, Mr. Barrett, on the second standard about the spillover parking and item number two, that a joint parking agreement relies on the uses having different hours of operation, and I assume that that's intended so that when one of the properties isn't at peak demand, the other isn't, and although these have similar hours of operation, does the second standard contemplate one of the properties having excess capacity at its peak demand? Is this the case here?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, I believe the answer is yes. They both have excess capacity. That standard is really applicable to, take an extreme example, a church and a bar, having very different hours of operation and both being very short of their parking requirement. But here we have two properties that appear to have 20% to 30% excess spaces, which is why we believe standard two is met.
Okay. And then, the final paragraph there in that section says that in 2006, Parks and Rec did not support a similar parking variance request. I didn't see any comments by Parks and Rec in the packet. Did they comment on this case?
Thank you for reminding me, Mr. Vig. I left phone messages with them directly, and they chose not to respond. I left phone messages with them directly, and they chose not to respond, so I'm assuming they have no objection.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other board members have questions for Mr. Barrett? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would the petitioner please come forward? Again, state your name for the record.
It's Michael Ivancic.
Thank you, Mr. Ivancic. You'll have 10 minutes for your presentation and request that you speak to the two standards that we'll need to base our findings of fact on.
Okay. As far as the first standard on the need and the parking studies, I'll do a little clarification about what they were. The one that Tom Davis did, which I think there is in your packet, the letter from Tom, was when they were looking for Title Nine or Title 21 rewrite, looking for information on what to set the parking standards. And he was allowed to come into each of the buildings and count the parking spaces in order to do that study. He chose a time when they felt was, it was going to be the busiest time, which was Sunday night at like 12 o'clock or something along that line. And that's when he came in, he counted spaces, and he actually came up with having more empty spaces than we did. He looked at the same time at the lot across the street, did notice parked cars back there, and he actually deducted those from his calculation. So those are included in his calculation. And it states that in that letter that's included in there. His parking study was part of what got us thinking, well, should we go for a variance? And we've been waiting for the Title 21 rewrite because we wouldn't need the variance at that time, and it just seems to keep going on and on and on. And we're now looking, we just can't afford to keep a good deal of this building empty in order to make it profitable. And so that's why we decided, well, we'll come in for a variance on this. Our study, we got the information on what to do on it came from the traffic department, and they told us to go out every two hours from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 a.m. or 8:00 p.m., I think, and count the cars. And we had that do it, that happen. And it pretty much concurs with the same results of what Tom came up with, that on the weekends was when there was more parking there. And that was also, we had them count the parking spaces in the lots across the street over at the Ballfields. And they found, I think at the most, eight cars over there across from our lot, and that happened on the weekends. And it's my guess that that's being, that's from visitors who come to visit on the weekends. And you have the parking garage that they can't get in, and so they're using that. And I think the agreement between our property and our other property next door, if that was readily available, this is the space that you use. The spaces out in front of that building of Park Plaza One are the spaces that are open all the time. Those are pretty much open. And if guest parking was using that, I think that would work out better for everybody. At present, we share the entrance to the garage with Park Plaza One. They both go down and go to the underfloor garages. So we do have that relationship right now. And so it would just be continuing on that same relationship. If somebody comes and they can't get in, they come in that entrance. The Park Plaza One parking lot is the one that is available, right next door, goes right off of that entrance. I think that the studies really show what you find when you go out there. You've got two floors of parking garage, expensive space, and it's empty. As far as the motorcycle parking, we'd be glad to turn some of the parking spaces into motorcycle parking. Right now, what I did notice with the motorcycles is people were doubling up. They were putting their motorcycle in the back of their other space. So they actually put their motorcycle and their car in the same space, and there was enough room to do that. We've also noticed there that the parking is, well, they're allowed one space that goes with their unit right now. And that was another option that we put forward, is that maybe if somebody moves in, and we do have a parking problem in the future, that we go ahead and say, okay, we'll give you a credit back for that space in order to solve any future problems that we might have, along with the motorcycle parking and more bike parking, or even the option of giving bus passes to the people who move in. The property tends to attract people who don't need a second car. And it's the nature of where it is, the closeness to downtown, and you walk in the parking garage now, and it's just empty. You know, it's an empty space. And we'd like to use that space and use additional space that was built when we originally built the project, that where we were thinking we were going to put the units in. That's when we went in for the original variance, and we were advised by the Parks Department that this is a brand-new project, it's untested, we don't have enough data to know if you're going to be parking in our lot across the street, come back later. We're coming back later. Right now, we're asking for this variance. And it's, there are some people parking across the street. I would say some of them have to do with our project. It's tough to control when a guest comes and parks across the street. But we would do the best we could do to control that and advise people not to park across the street. It's much easier to park in front of the building. And I'm not sure if they think they can't or whatever, but it would be easier if they could just park Plaza One and walk right over. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ivancic. Do any board members have questions for the applicant?
Okay, I do have one question. One of the department's recommendations on page 10 of the staff packet lists some additional measures, should additional parking be needed, that the applicant should consult with the department prior to implementing. Have you reviewed those?
Yes, we actually suggested all of this. And we wouldn't want to be strapped with saying, you've got to do all these right now because we don't think we're ever going to get a problem to where we don't have enough spaces. But if that does become a problem, we are perfectly willing to try any and all of those measures if we need to, you know, this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Barrett, any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Ivancic.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open this case up for public testimony. If there's anyone from the public wishing to testify, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, public testimony for this case is closed. Mr. Ivancic, you do have a few minutes left. Was there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vig?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of Mr. Barrett?
Yes, please do.
Mr. Barrett, with regard to that fifth condition that states, should additional parking be needed, how would that be determined?
Mr. Chairman, it would be essentially the same as any violation. There would be a complaint from a neighbor, or if a code officer happened to be passing by and noticed something very obvious. But for the most part, we rely on neighborhood complaints to tell us something is wrong.
Is it, would it be advisable to, rather than wait for a complaint, to specify or require that a survey be done within an 18-month period or something like that after this has been in place?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, ask the applicant to conduct another parking study similar to what he's done within a year and a half after the new units are built?
That's correct.
I don't have a problem with it.
We would have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, pending any other questions, we'll close the public hearing. The matter now rests with the board. Will a board member please put forward a positive motion? Ms. Williams, my screen says that you've put forward a motion, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, and still waiting on a second. Mr. Vig? Thank you. Ms. Williams, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. In case number 2011-074, I move we grant a variance from AMC 21.45.080B to allow fewer than the required number of parking spaces, subject to conditions one through five on pages nine and 10 of the staff packet, and the 18-month parking study that has been added to condition five.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Vig, I jumped the gun a little bit. Does your second still stand?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks. Ms. Williams, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I don't think I have much to add beyond what staff has outlined in their findings. But I do believe that Standard One is also substantially met. Looking at both parking studies that were completed, one by the petitioner and one by the municipality, there's at least 40 to 60 extra spaces. And then if you look at the overflow area at Park Plaza One, there's at least 40 extra spaces there, too. So I think that they have substantially met that demonstrated or not demonstrated need for parking for the building. For Standard Number Two, I also believe that that has been met for the reasons that staff outlined and that I mentioned. And for Standard One, that parking in Park Plaza One, which would be the overflow area, there's at least 40 extra spots. And even if you look at the, even though it's nonconforming, there's only nine spots that are difference between the nonconforming and the conforming, which is 161 to 170. So that doesn't make that much of an impact. So for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig.
Thank you. I concur with the staff's findings on Standard One and Ms. Williams' explanations of her reasoning. And so I believe that that is, that Standard is substantially met. On Standard Two, with regard to the spill-over parking, I agree that, I believe that that is substantially met. And the reasons outlined in the staff packet for belief that it is only partially met, I disagree slightly with number two. I understand what the intent of the shared-use parking agreement is intended to cover. I think it's unlikely that should spill-over parking from Park Plaza Two be used on Park Plaza One, that Park Plaza One would have a similar spill-over need at exactly the same time. I think even though they are similar uses, it's an unlikely situation. And so I think that that is less of a concern to me. So anyway, for those reasons, I believe Standard Two is substantially met, and I intend to support the motion.
Ms. Williams, some questions about the defining, perhaps, the addition that Mr. Vig alluded to. Could we work on refining that language a little bit to specify exactly what additional condition would be required of the applicant in terms of an additional parking study? 18 months?
I believe, and Mr. Vig can correct me if I'm wrong, that the requirement would be 18 months after the 11 new units have been completed, that the petitioner would be required to complete another parking study to make sure that parking was still adequate at Park Plaza Two.
Got it. Thank you very much, Ms. Williams.
That's my intent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vig. Any other board member comments on the motion?
I do intend to support the motion. Of course, spill-over was a concern of mine as well, but as referred tonight, and the staff indicates, it appears that the spill-over isn't a result of a shortage of parking spaces. There are other causes, perhaps, in effect there. So I intend to support the motion. That motion passes with five yes votes. I'll read for the record, "Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court."
All right, moving on to our second case, case number 2011-081. Would the petitioner or the petitioner's representative, Ms. DeLeon or Ms. Enix, please come forward? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We need the staff report first, and my apologies. About 10 minutes or so. Would the staff please provide sufficiency of notice?
Yes. The case was noticed on the municipal website. The sign is posted, and 64 public hearing notices were mailed out on June 22nd. None were returned.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The case before the board is Children's World, a childcare center. They are here to allow a reduction in the buffer landscaping requirements in the R2M zoning district. A new building was constructed in 2010 in order to expand the capacity of the childcare center. An administrative site plan review was done in 2009 for the extension of the center. The administrative site plan review required buffer landscaping along the north, south, and east property lines. A condition of that approval was to resolve the landscaping. The property does not meet the landscape standards of Title 21. The code requires buffer landscaping along the length of each lot line, which abuts a lot within a residential district. The property is surrounded by residentially zoned land on all sides, with the exception of the side that faces Jewel Lake Road. The attached landscape plan, which is on page 41 of your packet, indicates in the colored areas, the buffer landscaping for which the petitioner is seeking a variance. They're shaded, darker shaded areas along the perimeter of the property line. Those are the areas they're seeking a variance for. Those are the areas they're seeking a variance for. Standard number 1, there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. This standard is not substantially met. There are no unusual physical features which directly relate to the need for this variance. The lot is rectangular and similar in size and shape to other lots in the neighborhood. Standard number 2, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create an exceptional or undue hardship. The standard is not substantially met. The petitioner's middle indicates that in Section 3, which is the part that's to the rear of the classroom building, the presence of underground and overhead utility lines and a surface drainage swale will be impeded. The presence of utilities and a drainage swale do not create an undue hardship upon the petitioner that is dissimilar to other R2M lots. Currently, there is not a drainage swale in this area, but should a drainage swale be created, the shrubs could be located on either side of it. As for standard number 3, the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is not substantially met. The need for the variance is a result of the actions of the petitioner. The classroom building was constructed in 2010, and it could have been located so that there was adequate space to implement the buffer landscaping. The site had mature vegetation and required landscape areas prior to its removal for the classroom addition. Further, the site plan, which was submitted and done in 2009, indicated on it 10-foot buffer landscape areas along the northeast and south property boundaries. That's on, that site plan is on page 20 of your packet, and on it, it clearly shows the need for the landscape buffers on those sides of the property. Thus, the owner was aware of the need to provide buffer landscaping in the areas indicated. As for standard number 4, this standard is not substantially met. When the site was reviewed in 2009, the department received comments from residents living nearby who were very concerned about the increased traffic and noise from the children at the childcare center. Standard number 5, the variance, if granted, will not change the character of the zoning district. This standard is not substantially met. While the property is owned residential, it has a commercial use. Considering the commercial use of the site and its juxtaposition to the adjoining residential properties, the landscape buffer would help to contain the noise and activity of the children on site and offer a buffer to the neighboring homes. Standard number 6, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect health, safety, and welfare. This standard is partially met. The elimination of the buffers would not appear to present health or safety issues. However, community welfare would suffer without the landscaping. As such, neighbors, children at the facility, the parents, visitors, and staff would all benefit from the presence of the trees and shrubs. Standard number 7, the variance granted is the minimum variance. The standard is not met. This is not the minimum variance. There is a conforming solution, landscaping can be installed. The submitted landscape plan shows the provision of plant materials in Sections 1 and 2. In Sections 1 and 2, buffer landscaping can be installed in Section 3, given the space restriction. Trees would be a challenge, however, shrubs could easily be planted. The photos of that area in Section 3 are in your packet, they're on pages 49, 54, and 55. That space is approximately about nine and a half feet wide. And finally, as to, referring to condition number 2, there was a letter in your packet on pages, pages 24 and 25 from DOT, and it says that should the childcare center expand, they will need to do some road improvements on Jewel Lake and to restrict left-hand, left-hand turn movements in and out. Either they will do it, or perhaps when the road is next up for some reconstruction, it may be done there. So it would depend entirely on timing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Do any board members have questions for, for staff? Okay, thank you. Now, if the petitioner or petitioner's representative would, would please come forward. And again, please state your name for the record.
My name is Christina Enix, and I'm the owner of Green Earth Land Works and the landscape contractor for this project, representing Maria. I'd like to note that I also sit on the Stormwater Advisory Committee for the rewrite of that and have been asked to review Title 21 rewrite. And I believe with those changes that are in process, a lot of her issues would have been resolved under the new codes. Unfortunately, due to the continual financial restraints, we are unable to wait for those and have to seek a variance. And I believe that I can explain to you the reasons why this is a requirement. I have a vested interest in installing trees and shrubs, and I feel that there are health issues, health and safety issues as to why they can't, and I can explain to you the practical reasons. First of all, I'd like to touch base on a couple different things. When the construction of this building took place, there, as stated, there was the condition of the landscape. There was a disconnect between the civil drawings regarding the drainage swales and the landscape architect. That's unfortunate, but now we're left with a building that is only approximately nine and a half feet away from the property line. And that exact area is, it's not too much of a swale at this point because of the, it hasn't been finally graded, but there is a storm drain in the corner of the northeast property, and if you look, I believe it's on page 50, 54, page 54, you'll see that, the storm drain. That storm drain is designed to flow from both sides of the, of the building down, back to that storm drain in the corner. So we're talking about the entire play area. If you look on the plans on page 41, the south side, where it's, you know, doesn't, what does it say there? Between the wood fence behind the parking lot to the building, that entire area drains to that storm drain. And the installation of trees and shrubs behind the building causes a few issues. The number one issue is that in the middle of that building, in the back, is the fire hookup. Because of the distance from the parking lot, they, they were required to put a hookup for, for fire, and by installing trees and shrubs back there, we are potentially impeding their ability to get to that at a school. I mean, that just doesn't make any sense. I looked at the viability of planting trees and shrubs on either side of the swale, and if we go towards the building, we're getting too close to the building. There's also a lot of utilities there and overhead power lines. If you push them to the other side of the swale closer to the fence, then you're under the, the overhead power lines. Additionally, it's an obstacle for the fire department to hook up their hoses at a school. The, the other issue that we have with planting material back there is the drainage, the drainage swell, and potentially impeding and flowing onto the adjacent residential properties, which I think would be a bigger issue. I'd like to note, make note that there is a six-foot cedar fence installed, so there is some already buffer there with the fence. Also, the building is a two-story building, and all of the children's outdoor activities are between the buildings for the schools, the two buildings on site, so there's no children playing directly next to the east side property because you have that building in between. So that's the reason we are asking for the variance in the back due to drainage and, and the hookup for the fire department. I spoke with both of those departments at the municipality, and they, they were both agreeable to, you know, not having any plant material impeding their, their accessibility and, and the proper draining, drainage. The other area that we're asking for the variance for is along Section 2. And this is the, the playground area for the children. There are a lot of small children here, so, you know, they primarily deal with kids five and under. The, the south side of the, of the, no, the north side of the property, the reason we ask for a reduction in the landscape requirement there is to not impede access to the, the back of each building. There's also some light posts there that, that are in the, the area of the landscaping. So we changed that to be just trees to, to create some buffering for the, the homeowners to that side, and then the ground cover is, is grasses so that if children play in or around it, or if they're chasing a ball and they dive, it's just grass, it's nothing that's going to hurt them. And similarly, on the, on the other side, I just want to make one note, the smallest children play on the north side of the property. That's why we have limited more, the, the trees and shrubs, not only for their safety in their playing, but also for the teachers to be able to see all of them, you know, at any given time. On the, the south side property, the only thing that we request the variance are on the shrubs, and that's for the same issues for kids playing and running, that there's nothing that could potentially harm them under the snow. If we were required to install all those shrubs, I believe it would be an issue for the children, and I would recommend for her to install a second fence to buffer the landscaping from the children, which I think is an undue hardship for something that's really not going to create much buffering, considering there's already a seven-foot cedar fence between them and the landscapes. The shrubs will never grow taller than that. The, the front area, parking lot, we're not asking for any kind of variance on parking spaces. All of that's already installed, the asphalt is there. We've actually already completed landscaping to code on the south side of the property. All the allotted trees and shrubs are already in. The only other area that we're asking for a variance on the front parking lot area, Section 1, is along the property between, I have a letter from that homeowner here I'd like to pass out. There's a very, very small space between the asphalt and the property line, and there's already existing four trees that are very mature and large. If we were required to put in new landscaping and take out the existing trees, we'd actually get less coverage. Also, installing shrubs around those, the root systems of the existing trees would harm existing trees. What the homeowner would like to see, and Maria and him have discussed this, would be a six-foot cedar fence to create buffering, and the installation of deciduous trees in the voided areas, which are approximately four in between the areas where the trees are existing, so that it would create a buffer canopy above the six-foot fence and create more of a buffer than any tiny shrubs would create. And if I could hand these out?
Please do.
I have a couple more.
Okay, we'll need to maintain a copy for 30 days for the record, but I think we can share here. Thank you. One more here. No, I didn't. Thanks, John. Give her about two minutes, yeah? Okay, Ms. Enix, you have about two minutes left. I'm not sure if that was the conclusion of your presentation, or...
Well, I, one of the issues that I, I think is important to, to address is the community welfare of having more trees and shrubs. There's actually a lot of vegetation on this property throughout, and I think that we wouldn't be harming the community welfare by not installing shrubs along Section 3. First, they will never be seen. They would probably die if they, there's no sunlight there between the fence and the, and the building, as well as the swale that needs to be reestablished for the storm drain. And then if they do survive, they create a bigger hazard to the children that attend the school by impeding fire accessibility to the water. I think that's really important. So besides that, like I said, I think that under the new Title 21 regulations, a lot of her issues would have been resolved, but we just cannot wait that long. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enix. Board members have any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Ms. Enix, on, let's see, I'm, I'm looking at a, a survey map like this in the packet, and it, it shows on the, on the eastern side of the lot, a two-story school, but then south of that structure, it's just shown a completed foundation. This is dated May 16 of 2011. The landscape plan that I have looks as though that building is two stories full length. So could you explain what the current status of that is?
Yes, currently, the, it is two buildings across, but the, the building on the other side has not been installed. It's like a prefabricated building that just gets set in place. So the second part of that building is actually not in at this time.
But the foundation is there?
The foundation is there.
Okay. And, and you referred to a, a fire department hookup on the east side of that existing structure?
Yeah, it's essentially in the middle.
Okay, and I am, I'm interested to learn more about how vegetation or shrubs in that strip would be an impact, but that cedar fence, just a few feet away, is, is not as far as getting access to that hookup. Could you elaborate on that?
Well, they wouldn't have to walk through the fence. I mean, there's gates going to the back, so they would have clear access. They'd have essentially nine and a half feet of clear access. If there was shrubs on each side of the swale, and, and let's say they did survive, even under the conditions of not getting any sunlight, they would create essentially, you know, they would block access, especially if it was, you know, winter time and they'd have to climb over them. They had to pull their hoses around them, it would just, it would create more of a hardship unnecessarily. I think that the benefit of having the shrubs there don't outweigh the consequences of, of them.
Thank you.
Ms. Enix, I do have a question or two. You showed us a picture of a storm drain inlet and... You showed us a picture of a storm drain inlet and referenced its effect on the property. Was that storm drain inlet a part of improvements that recently occurred to the property?
Yes.
Okay.
And in the corner, the northeast corner, you can see there's some landscaping around it. We did, in this plan, include more grasses as a filtration before the water hits the storm drain.
Okay. Standards 1 through 3 require the board to base our findings of fact and tie those findings to exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the lot. Anything aside from that storm drain that's unusual about the property that would perhaps give weight to this variance request?
Okay, well, besides the storm drain, which I think is a big issue, because if we impede the drainage and it starts draining on her neighboring properties, the neighboring residential areas, you know, that's strictly prohibited. So by impeding the draining, we create a bigger problem. I think that additionally, the, you know, the fire hookup in the middle back of that property creates a hardship if it's impeded. I would definitely concede that there was a disconnect between the civil engineering and the landscaping, which I see quite often. But right now, we're left with a situation that's not ideal, and we just have to find the best solution to that. And I believe the best solution to that is with the cedar fence, the six-foot cedar fence, and allowing that area in between the building and the fence to remain open and unimpeded.
Other board members have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Ferguson?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Enix. We'll open it up for public testimony.
Okay. Thank you.
And you'll have a chance for rebuttal if you need to. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this case? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, okay. Ms. Enix, you do have another minute, but unless you have a need for rebuttal, I conclude. Any more questions by the board? No? Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. Would a board member please put forward a positive motion? I'll throw out a tip, the conditions are on Page 7 of the staff packet. Mr. Vig, thank you. Would you please state your motion?
Mr. Chairman, in case number 2011-081, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.45.310.82 childcare centers to allow a reduction in the buffer landscaping requirement in the R2M zoning district, subject to the department recommendations shown on Page 7 of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. And just to clarify, there are two recommendations, correct?
Yes, the two recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Williams, thank you for your second.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Vig, would you please speak to your motion?
With, in standard number one, that there exists exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, I believe that there potentially could be something somewhat unusual with the storm drain inlet in the northeast corner of the property. But I'm not sure that it's extraordinary, that is something that wouldn't be applicable in other land in the same zoning district. I'm not, I don't believe that that standard is substantially met. Standard number two, because of these physical circumstances, strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. I don't think that that potential physical circumstance that I mentioned rises to the level that it would result in these exceptional or undue hardships to comply with the landscaping requirements identified. Number three, standard is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The applicant provided a plan to the municipality for permitting, which was approved, and for whatever reason, the plans didn't conform to, weren't consistent with each other. That was an action by the applicant, although I understand indirectly, but nevertheless, actions that the applicant took. So I believe that that is a self-imposed hardship. The variance if granted, number four, would, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. We've seen comments from 2009 by neighbors objecting to the situation at that time, and I think that there is a potential for adverse impact if the variance were to be granted. Standard number five, variance if granted is keeping with the intent of the code will not change the zone, the character of the zoning district in which the property is located and will not permit a use that is otherwise not permitted. I, again, I don't believe that that is substantially met either. There are changes to the character of the zoning district that would be, I believe, created from granting the variance, so I do not believe that that is met. Standard number six, the variance if granted does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of municipality of Anchorage. The applicant stated that there's a lot of vegetation or landscaping on the lot, and I looked at the pictures, I don't really see that much in the pictures that were submitted. Staff makes the point that the landscaping provides a benefit to the community, and I tend to agree with that, that it seems that it falls short of what looks to be in the area, and so I don't agree that that is, or I agree that that standard is not met. Standard seven, the variance granted is the minimum. It will make possible or reasonable use of the land. I agree with Staff that there is a conforming solution. Landscaping can be installed. I believe that with the proper selection of plant materials, that utility impacts and fire department access could be provided and maintained, and I believe that this is not the minimal variance. And so for those reasons, I do not intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Williams, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks. I also don't intend to support the motion for the reasons outlined by Staff and by Mr. Vig, but quickly walking through the standards, I also don't believe standard one is substantially met. While I am sympathetic to the storm drain issue, I agree with Mr. Vig that that doesn't rise to the level of an exceptional or extraordinary circumstance. In addition, the topography and the size of the lot is similar in shape, and similar to lots in the neighborhood, as indicated by Staff. I also don't believe that standard two is substantially met. The, installing the landscaping, I don't think will impact use of the property. It will still be able to be used as a school as it currently is. I don't believe standard three is substantially met either, because I do agree with Mr. Vig and Staff that the hardship was self-imposed. The site plan was filed, and so the petitioners were aware of the buffer and the landscaping requirements at the time that they submitted their plan. Standard four, I also don't believe that that is substantially met. I, as Staff indicated and as Mr. Vig pointed out, there have been concerns raised by neighbors in the area about the not having a landscaping and having a school in the area. Standard five, I also don't believe that that is substantially met, because this is a residential area. The code and the landscaping requirements are set up to protect those residential uses as well. Standard six, I agree with Staff and Mr. Vig that that may at least be partially met. And standard seven, I also agree that that is not substantially met, because I do think that some landscaping can be planted to create the buffer zone as required by the code. So for those reasons, I don't intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Would any other board members like to make a comment on this motion? Okay, seeing none. With that, let's vote. That motion fails with five no votes. Read for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Would the board like to take a break, or should we carry on? Okay to carry on? Let's keep going, all right. Takes us to case number three. Is the petitioner still present? She is, okay, great. Would Staff please provide sufficiently of notice for case number 2011-079?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was posted on the Muni website, and the blue and white public hearing signs were posted. 104 public hearing notices were mailed for this case. We did not receive any direct responses to the public hearing notices, but the applicant has submitted many letters of support from neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask you to pull out your magnifying glasses for this one, because the encroachment is very small and a little difficult to see. Excuse me. The original ASBelt for the property is located on Page 3, and I'll draw your attention to the east part of the house, the right-hand side of it, as you're looking at the picture, where you can see a wall 10 feet in length, measured, facing the front yard, facing Roosevelt Drive. Then if you look at the plot plan that was submitted with the permit, which is on the following page, number four, you can see how the addition, the expansion was sketched in. It's a slightly heavier line, and it shows a slightly longer front-facing piece of the house. But this is in a conforming location. You can see that the front of the house at that 10-foot, what was originally 10-foot length, has now been extended, but it is also stepped back from the front yard lot line. And then on Page 3, we have the final drawing of what was actually built, and that 10-foot wall is now a straight line. It's not set back to meet the front yard setback, and it has grown from 10 to 14 feet. That tiny area is the actual area of encroachment, and if you bear with me and look at Page 56, that shows it just a little bit better. On Page 56, you can see the east side of the house labeled "Original Bedroom" and then "New Bedroom Addition." You see that the wall, the front wall of that portion of the house is now 14 feet long. And if you look very closely, you see a thin line running through the number 14, and in conjunction with the walls of the house, it forms a slight, or a very small triangle, I should say. That's the amount of the expansion that's in question. It's a two-foot encroachment, and it totals about nine square feet in size. So having, I hope, pointed out what the encroachment is, this is a request to allow repairs to an existing structure to encroach the front yard setback by approximately two feet and have a setback of 18 feet instead of the required 20 feet. And since this is a pre-code house, it's also a variance from the non-conforming section of the code. So that's why the request is labeled a variance from 2140 for the yard setbacks and from 2150 for the non-conforming portion of the code. So, the house was built after plating, but it was built before zoning, so it is legally non-conforming. The lot is a rectangular shape. It's over 15,000 square feet in size. It's similar in size and shape to other lots in the area. And in the backyard, it has a similar slope break as other homes which back on Fish Creek. So that is the other homes on Ms. Jay's side of Roosevelt Drive and on her backyard neighbors on Jefferson Drive. These folks all have essentially the same physical limitation caused by the creek. Oh, anywhere between 15 and 30 percent of their backyard is not usable, because this is a very, it's narrow in the sense that the channel for it is not wide at Ms. Jay's property, but it is very steep and a dramatic drop-off. There is a photograph in the package of the creek bank, but I don't think it really shows you how dramatic a fall it is. Take my word for it, I've been there, it's dramatic. A portion of the master bedroom was replaced because the floor had rotted, and the replaced portion is about nine square feet, as mentioned, and it extends into the front yard setback. The applicant was aware of the need for a variance and relied upon her contractor, her building contractor, to obtain a variance. However, that variance application was never made, and I'm going to let Ms. Jay go into the history of the property, since she is intimately familiar. Going into the standards, standard number one, that there is something physically wrong with the property. The standard's partially met. It's a large, single-family lot, but only the front two-thirds of the lot are available for construction. There is a grade of about 40 percent in the area labeled "Bluff" on the ASBelt, and it's about 20 feet across. There is still a good area of backyard available for enlargement of the house, which is why we can say the standard is only partially met. There are physical issues with the property, but it is a big R2M property. Standard number two, because of the physical circumstances, strict application would create a hardship. This standard is substantially met. Although there are only some physical issues associated with the property, and there is area in the backyard to build, the area of the house that's being enlarged is a bedroom, and it is, the expansion is in a logical location to connect the bedroom to the rest of the house. That rear yard area that is available for future construction is not applicable to this variance, because it's not where the bedroom is currently located, and that would be an undue hardship for the applicant, requiring a major redesign of the floor plan of the house. Standard three, that the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is partially met. Part one, physical conditions are somewhat present. Part two, the need for the variance does appear to be the result of the actions of the applicant. the applicant. The applicant was aware of this, a building permit was applied for, the remodeling work was shown at legal setbacks, and the applicant has a, and it's in your package, has a receipt from the contractor that indicates he would file for a variance for the encroachment and get a change order from what had been previously submitted. However, the contractor apparently did neither, as we have no change order on file and no amendment plot plan. Nevertheless, the applicant was aware of the need for the variance, albeit she was relying heavily on the contractor to address this issue. Standard four, that the variance if granted is not an adverse effect to the adjacent properties, that standard is substantially met. There are no structure violation issues, drainage and runoff are not an issue. The encroachment is less than two feet and less than nine, or approximately nine square feet into the twenty-foot front yard setback. In effect, some encroachment in the front yard has been in place for decades without negative effect, and this is just a minor increase in that. Standard five, the variance if granted is in keeping with the intent of the code, that standard is also substantially met. It is a dimensional request, and the setback reduction doesn't change the character of the area. Other homes along the street appear to have a similar front yard setback. Standard six, the variance if granted does not affect the wider area of the municipality of Anchorage, that standard is also substantially met, as in number four, no health or safety or drainage issues have been identified. And standard seven, that this is the minimum variance to make possible a reasonable use of the land. As previously stated, the bedroom is being expanded so that it ties into the living room and the rest of the house, so in that sense, it's a minimum variance. This is a logical location, and it is only a two-foot encroachment and a total of nine square feet of additional space in the house. Therefore, the department believes the standard is substantially met. Should the board agree that the standards have been substantially met? There are three conditions on page ten for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, and this may be a question I should be asking of the applicant, but did the extent or the area of the encroachment increase with the renovations the applicant undertook? If it's nine square feet now, I mean, near as I can tell from the as-built on page three, or maybe it's the one that you referred to that was at a larger scale, I can't tell, but it looks as though it might have been the same area previously. Do you have a feel for that?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, it's very close, but it's still, we would still consider it an expansion, because the existing home is legally non-conforming, and now we have a new piece of house here, so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Barrett? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Barrett. If the petitioner would please come forward, and again, state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Allison Jay.
Good evening again.
I'm sorry?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
You'll have ten minutes for your presentation. Ask that you speak to the seven standards, and go ahead.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, we ask that you speak to the seven standards, that we have to base our findings upon.
Okay, am I supposed to review all those seven standards that are already?
No, Mr. Barrett gave her presentation based on them, and that's what the staff packet before us discusses, but.
Write up. Okay, first of all, I want to say, before I forget, the expansion is identical. I mean, there is no expansion. The room has increased from a, I forget, it was ten-foot wide by twelve-foot long, I think, and the point at which it starts encroaching measures out to eight and a half feet. And we can't tell directly without cutting into the wall that's been built, where, how far it goes back, where that line actually hits, but it's like between one and a half and two feet, so it's actually not even eighteen square feet. It's probably, I didn't get out my geography and remember how to figure the area of a triangle, but it's probably more like sixteen square feet or something like that. That same amount of encroachment, it's rebuilt on the identical foot plan that was there before, except now it's wider, but the wider part is not in the encroachment. It's outside of that line, as you can see, because the line intersects the wall at about eight and a half feet, and the wall was, the wall previously went out ten feet, now it goes out fourteen feet. So there is no increased amount of encroachment, it's the same amount that was always there before. And I want to start by saying, my intent was that we totally avoid the issue. We were going to build the bedroom connecting two feet back to totally avoid any problem. That was our original plan. And the reason we're not building the bedroom in the back is we have only two bedrooms in that house. One is very tiny in the back, and we have one bathroom, one tiny bedroom in the back, and then there's a hallway that goes to the basement that butts or separates the backyard from sort of the dining room kitchen area, and then part of the kitchen wall is directly against the back wall. But when you go outside, we have, our septic comes in from that corner down below, and we have a utility room in the basement against that back wall, directly under that little tiny bedroom against the back wall, that has a little vent for the furnace. So any concept of changing that layout is major, really, really major, to try and build directly into the backyard. Nonetheless, our intent was to build two feet back, avoid any encroachment at all. I've been, for the last three years, trying to complete a master's program and working full-time, and we've been really strapped. I mean, it took us ten years of fret and worry, wondering when this bedroom was going to fall through, you know, before we could afford or find a way to rebuild it. So we did that, and being rather ignorant of the whole process, and being really overwhelmed with my internship in school and work, I trusted my contractor, I thought he really knew what he was doing, and he amidst all this said, you know, we found out, we're talking to our contact at the Muni, we can pay six hundred dollars for this variance, and we just put in this application, and we could just build on the same footprint, and that really resolves some major structural issues with how to break into your old house, how to connect, plus we were going to have to cut a hole in the wall, and we all have a really tiny living room, it was really going to compromise the little space we have in the living room, and it just simplified everything. So this is great, I paid him the six hundred dollars, he wrote that into the receipt, and I kept asking him as time went on, where's the paperwork showing the variance? Oh, no, no, you'll see that, now that's my own ignorance, and I was really overwhelmed at the time, and I really didn't know anything about any of this. But he kept assuring me that I would see that later on, as the permit closed out, that everything was fine. And of course, as things went more and more sour with his contractor, I went and pulled owner, I pulled my own electrical and mechanical permits when we reached that point, and I was sitting at the Muni office going through the folder, going, where the heck is, you know, any record of this variance? And that's when we found out that, you know, he really was just at that point not telling us, of course, he had found out he couldn't do that, because there's all this involved, and he was not honest. By then, the foundation was built. Anyway, all kinds of complications, don't have anything to do with this, but we way overspent on the foundation, because he way overbuilt it, and this took for god-awful ever, and this was going through the winter, so at that point, we were really kind of stuck. So I went ahead to apply for the variance, and that's how all this came about, that we actually built before, seeking the variance, which is exactly what I didn't want to do and never intended to do. So, let's see. As far as also building it in the back of the lot, like Mr. Barrett said, a good part of our lot has a steep bluff, and probably at one time had a septic system. We have a clean-out in the back, you know, forward from the bluff in the back northwest corner, and most likely, I mean, there had to be septic under there somewhere, because there really, there's no indication it was the front yard, plus the septic now runs out the back. So that was probably another reason the house was built so far forward, besides Fish Creek, which normally is just a little crack in the ground. I've once seen it really fill up pretty readily when we had really high storms a few years ago, or heavy storms a few years ago, so probably back then, that was a little more of a concern, I'm assuming, because most of the houses there are built pretty far forward, and ours is quite far forward, but our, when you look at how Fish Creek cuts, you go back and look at the creek, our, ours kind of cuts in, it's a steeper drop from our lot than some lots, some have a steep drop, but our, ours kind of cuts in a little more, which I'm assuming is partly why they put the house so far forward. Our neighbors are all very happy about the improvements we made, because we're turning a very dilapidated house into a much nicer-looking house, and also showing as evidence that we were really intending to keep within the intent of the law and all regulations. We had the house, there's a corner of the back bedroom that's cut off, and there's an extra wall built there to assure that we didn't encroach on the five-foot easement between lots, because, you know, even though we've got a fence there and so forth, we know that the fence isn't exactly where the lot line is, and our neighbors are fine, and they're very happy with what we're doing. I don't think, I think everything else is well addressed between my write-up and what Mr. Barrett had to say, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jay. If you hold on for just a minute, we might have some questions for you. Do any board members have questions for the applicant? I do appreciate that your diligence is noted by the receipt and invoice from your contractor, and thank you for bringing that up as well, that you did make an attempt to address this prior to construction. Does the staff have any questions of the petitioner?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick comment, it was noted in the report that the total square footage of the encroachment is about nine square feet, and how that's calculated is, assuming that it is roughly a triangle shape, one-half base times the height of the area of a triangle. Base is measured about two-foot encroachment, the height of the triangle is nine feet, so that's eighteen, one-half of that is eight. So Ms. Jay is correct, the encroachment cannot be larger than nine square feet, and is probably somewhat smaller, because we could not dig into the wall to see what was still there, and actually how much had been added. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thank you, Ms. Jay. We'll open the hearing up for public testimony, if there's anyone from the public wishing to testify.
Shall I sit down?
Seeing, it appears there's nobody to testify from the public, so unless you have any additional comments, yes, you may have a seat. Thank you very much. That will close the public hearing. Matter now rests with the board. If I could ask a board member to please put forward a positive motion for this case. Mr. Fink, thank you. Please state your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we grant a variance.
Mr. Fink, sorry, is your microphone on there?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we grant a variance in case number 2011-079, a variance from AMC 21.40.045G and 2155040, to allow repairs to an existing structure to encroach the required front yard setback by approximately two feet and have a setback of eighteen feet instead of the required twenty feet. I would ask that conditions one, two, and three, as recommended by staff on page ten, be incorporated into that variance request, granting the request.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Williams, have you seconded the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fink, would you like to speak to the motion?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, I think the staff did a really good job, and I'd like to incorporate their findings as our findings. They've recommended approval and found all of the standards were met, and again, rather than just go back through them, I would ask that we incorporate them into our order.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Williams, would you like to make any additional comment?
Sure, why not? I also agree with staff, and I thought they did a very clear job of explaining things, and I agree with staff and Mr. Fink that the variance should be granted, and I do intend to support the motion. On standard number one, I do believe that the standard is met due to the steep topography of the lot, as well as the restrictions posed by the drainage easement and Fish Creek. Standard number two, I do believe that the topography of the lot did force the house to be built closer to the front property line, which then, you know, restricts how the floor plan could be changed or the house renovated. Standard three, I do believe that that's met as well, because of the physical circumstances of the land already described. And also, I'm very sympathetic to Ms. Jay and her effort to make sure that the variance was granted before construction began. Standard four, I also believe that that is substantially met. This is a very, it's a de minimis encroachment. There's also many letters of support from her neighbors. Standard five, I do believe that that is substantially met as well. This is a dimensional, not a use variance. I agree with staff on standard six, that that is substantially met, and standard seven is substantially met. Again, it's a very de minimis encroachment, and also moving the house back could cause some significant structural problems as far as reconfiguring the house that way. So again, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any additional board member comments? That motion passes with five yes votes, granting the variance as requested in case 2011-079. I'll read for the record, "Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." That closes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. Thank you. Do we have any reports?
Mr. Chairman, there won't be a meeting next month, no applications made by the deadline. Tentatively, we have two cases for September, so no August meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All right. Any board member comments? Mr. Vig, what are you going to surprise us with next month? All right, well, thank you all for being here tonight. Hopefully, there's still some sun out there for us. Meeting adjourned.